All the glory and give you all the praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. So, good afternoon. Let's switch back. Good afternoon, commissioners. So today we are going to have a presentation from Mr. Max. Is it Greenblatt?
Greenblatt.
Greenblatt, okay, from Enterprise. And so he came to meet with staff two, three weeks ago to present their fleet management program that they currently offer. And there are several counties that already have this in place. And our concern, of course, is we have a lot of vehicles that are, we have very old fleet. We have some even 2014 vehicles in the sheriff's office. And so we think this would be a great time to transition from purchasing vehicles to leasing vehicles. So we'll just let him steer from here with the presentation. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the introduction, Ms. Perry. So as Ms. Perry introduced me, I'm Max Greenblatt. I'm with Enterprise Fleet Management out of our Raleigh office. I'll be running a condensed version of our presentation that we ran through all together a couple of weeks ago to show what kind of impact we can make with a partnership with Vance County, both financially and operationally. At any point, should there be questions, please feel free to interrupt, and I'm more than happy to address any of those. So to start, I'm just going to run through a quick agenda here. I'm going to give you an executive summary of what we've discussed so far throughout this project that we've worked on together. I'll talk through some recommended operational services, run through a fleet replacement strategy, and some analysis on what the impact of that would be, should we partner, and leave some time for Q and A here at the end. Very quick background on Enterprise Fleet Management. We've been around since 1957. We are in our third generation of family ownership out of St. Louis, Missouri. And one major reason I show you this slide is in the bottom right-hand side, you will see that we partner with over 85 government agencies here in North Carolina alone, with over 6,000 vehicles under management for those partners of ours. Nationally, we're approaching 2,200 government agencies that we partner with for their fleet needs. Again, as a holistic approach to reduce CapEx, OpEx, and increase efficiency with everything fleet-related for our municipal partners. This is a quick snapshot here that's also in the leave-behind document that I've given to each of you that just highlights a few of our local partnerships at the county and city level throughout North Carolina. You very well may recognize some municipalities here that you have some contacts with. I'd highly encourage you throughout this decision-making process to feel more than free to reach out to anyone that you know, so you can hear directly from them how the partnership has impacted their agency. This is also another very quick snapshot I'll review briefly here, just to give a quick introduction from a fleet management perspective as to what Enterprise Fleet Management helps our government agency partners with. This wheel essentially describes the life cycle of a vehicle from acquisition there at 12 o'clock all the way around to disposal of vehicles. At the top again there, and everything that we help with in between. We are not simply just an acquisition and disposal tool. We have maintenance programs that I'll touch on briefly, fuel programs, and we handle aftermarket customization for vehicles of any type of department within a government agency. So vehicles land exactly how you need them specced and ready to go, so that there's not a purchase and then waiting months for the outfit. The vehicle lands ready to go with you here, so that you can get someone right into that and make use of the vehicle right away. So I'll briefly summarize our executive summary of what we've discussed in our meetings thus far. As County Manager Perry had mentioned there, the main issue or challenge that we're faced with here is an aged fleet. Of the 97 active vehicles that we have in the Vance County fleet, the average age is seven years, and with the pace of acquisitions, the approximate holding period, or what we're on pace to have vehicles at in terms of age upon disposal, is actually about 14 years. So to summarize what solutions we're looking for, we're looking to put in place a scalable plan and essentially reduce or remove the administrative burden of everything related to fleet management on county personnel. We're looking to achieve more with the same or less budget when it comes to acquiring vehicles and refreshing the fleet at a healthier pace to achieve better vehicle safety and be able to optimize the amount of equity we can recapture for the county upon disposing those vehicles at the right time. From a maintenance perspective, we're looking at being able to flatline with a fixed cost the maintenance expenditure on our non-emergency response vehicle units, as well as provide professional oversight and auditing of repairs for emergency response units. And from a fuel perspective, we're looking to integrate the data from the Right Express program that y'all are currently on into our client website to make strategic actionable decisions with your dedicated client strategy manager that you would have assigned to you from our Raleigh office with my counterparts there. To sum it up a little more briefly, this would be our proposed structure. And the burden of vehicle management, again, would be on Enterprise here. I basically could go through that wheel again that I showed you just a few moments ago in terms of everything that Enterprise can provide. And by operating the largest fleet of vehicles in the world, Enterprise has proven expertise in these areas. And by leveraging our buying and selling power with the infrastructure we have, purchasing vehicles at lower-than-state contract pricing via factory order direct with the manufacturers, we are able to reduce CapEx as well. So here's a quick look at the current state of the fleet here in Vance County. This visualization is really important to look at from a perspective of that average holding period on that right-hand side. When we look at the average number of annual acquisitions, that is a six-year average historically of about seven annual acquisitions. When you divide those seven annual acquisitions into your total fleet size of 97 vehicles, that actually puts us on pace for a holding period of just over 14 years. Now, there's a very, very good opportunity here to reduce that average holding period. Number one, because of safety features that are consistently being improved in new model years of vehicles. But number two, to be able to reduce that cycle time of the holding period of the fleet, to optimize that resale, to capture equity back to fund the fleet. And essentially, over the long term, after multiple rounds of cycling vehicles, have that fleet be able to create a sustainable budget to reinvest vehicle by vehicle, to reduce your capital expenditure in the long term. I'll explain a little bit more about the actual impact of that in just a few moments. But on this slide, you can also see the odometer distribution of your vehicles. And what sticks out to me on this slide, besides the average holding period, is our odometer distribution there of the number of vehicles above 100,000 miles. That's where the pain of maintenance issues comes into play and where the operating expense of these vehicles starts to balloon exponentially over the years, is past that 100,000-mile mark. And so our goal here is to reduce that average mileage as well. On this slide, what you're going to see are a few of our operational programs. And I wanted to show you everyone this before I show you the actual schedule of a proposed fleet plan replacement schedule. Because from the maintenance side, currently, the burden right now is to be able to reconcile all of the maintenance records and house all of those in a place where we would be able to make actionable decisions on which vehicles might be maintenance outliers. And the other piece to that is the operating expense from maintenance. Typically, from a total cost of ownership perspective, accounts for over 27% of a vehicle's expenditure throughout its life with a county. So I mentioned earlier, for non-emergency response vehicles, that we can actually fix the cost of those, maintenance costs for those vehicles. With our full maintenance program, you'll see that in the top left of this slide. That program covers all preventative maintenance, as well as any reactive or unscheduled maintenance. So for example, if a transmission was to go on a vehicle when it's out of warranty, but before that 100,000-mile mark, we have many clients that don't have to suffer the burden of an $8,000 to $10,000 unexpected repair, because they're on our full maintenance program. Enterprise eats that cost, if you will. From a fixed budgeting perspective, that's been extremely valuable for other government clients to be able to flatline that maintenance expense. For the emergency response vehicles in the fleet, we can put our maintenance management program in place for those. That provides professional oversight from our National Service Department, which is a team of over 200 ASC-certified technicians at our corporate headquarters that audit every single repair for the county, to make sure we're getting the right repair for the right price and at the right time. It's only $6 per month per vehicle for that program there. And we have seen that make returns for our customers, just in the negotiated savings, to basically pay for itself over time.
Does that include sheriff's vehicles?
For the maintenance management program, for the $6 per month per vehicle, yes. Yep. And all of that data would be housed in your client website, where stakeholders for each department can see which vehicles, down to a cent per mile, are costing them the most. And our client strategy manager that would be paired on this account would use that data to make proactive recommendations on which vehicles we would anticipate large-dollar repairs on in the future, using our data that we have from the manufacturers, as well as our clients, to be able to say, maybe we should get out of this vehicle a little sooner before a major repair becomes an issue.
And you'd be using high-performance brakes and those kind of things on those vehicles?
Absolutely, yes. And there's a local network of shops that are in our network here. Every dealer in town is, and I can show you a few of those as well. Pete Smith is also on that network as well. And the other piece to that, when you mentioned brakes and tires, the full maintenance program has two sets of brakes and four tires built into that. So again, from a reactive maintenance-type situation, you're looking at being able to have those covered in that full maintenance program as well, so that there's not that $1,000 spike in a vehicle's repair cost when it hits 40,000 miles at that recommended tire interval. It's all flatlined and budgeted. Again, that's for the non-emergency response vehicle fleet. I mentioned earlier WEX Fuel. Many folks are familiar with that program already, because it's being used. But I just mentioned that again, because our recommendation would be to roll that right into our client website. Same thing as the maintenance, to provide actionable insights there and be able to track and enforce fleet policy with fuel. So earlier, leasing was mentioned, and I wanted to very quickly explain our open-ended equity leasing model. So on this slide, what you're going to see is an example of a $42,000 vehicle. That's about the price of a mid, or excuse me, a full-size truck, a half-ton truck on government pricing. And a traditional cash outlay would be $42,000 right up front out of the budget. The enterprise recommendation here would actually be to put it on what we call this open-ended equity lease. The equity that you build in the vehicle is the county's. It's very similar to a traditional finance. However, what's a little different is we pick a reduced book value or an unpaid principal to be able to lessen the cash outlay burden of acquiring vehicles. Now, we strategically pick that unpaid principal to leave, to lower the percentage of which we're depreciating the vehicle every month. So again, it preserves cash flow, and it means you're only financing the useful life portion of that vehicle. We pick a strategic number, knowing what our resale value is going to be at the term for that vehicle, being much higher than that unpaid principal, so that the difference, the equity that you've built there, returns right back to the county. Now, something special about that as well is that that can roll right into the next vehicle that we're replacing once we cycle. And so each department can have their fleet, start to fund their fleet throughout the future as the cycle continues with replacing vehicles. What you'll see here is the replacement criteria. So I'm going to start to jump into the analysis that we've put together to show the proof-of-concept here of picking best-in-class vehicles via pricing and total cost of ownership to replace the most aged vehicles. Now, on this slide, there's a lot of noise. But in the top-right corner, the most important thing to pay attention to is the replacement criteria that we put into our 10-year model to show what savings could look like. Now, this, you'll notice, is for the fleet of 53 vehicles. This excludes the sheriff's vehicles. This is simply non-emergency response vehicles. And one of the reasons for showing that is I wanted to show you a model for the sheriff's office vehicles, as well as just the county vehicles beyond the sheriff's vehicles. So I'll get to the sheriff's vehicles in just a moment. But in the top-right corner, that replacement criteria that we picked, that's actually the age of a vehicle today, when we would recommend replacing it in the next couple of years. So in the first year of partnership, we would recommend replacing anything 10 years or older or with an odometer of 100,000 miles or higher. In the next fiscal year, we would recommend replacing anything that today is eight years or older and an odometer above 60,000, and so on, so forth. So that replacement criteria is for as vehicles stand today, to look forward for the next five fiscal years. The replacement schedule, I will show you in a much cleaner look here on this next slide. And this next slide is going to be the 10-year model for the 53-vehicle sample size that we've put together here. So what this shows in the average bar, the yellow bar that you see in the top middle, is the 53 vehicles and the average number of vehicles having been purchased over the last five years here with the county. And with the average purchase price of those vehicles, what that CapEx budget would be, around that quarter million dollars. The equity-owned piece of that negative $20,666, that would be the average price that we've been disposing of vehicles here for. And then the maintenance is the amount of maintenance that these 53 vehicles would be adding up to yearly, and same for the fuel, for the fleet budget of about $438,000. What this model shows in year one is replacing 19 vehicles out of this 53-sample size, still having 32-owned vehicles, and the lease payments for those 19, annual lease payments adding up to about $159,000. By replacing 19 vehicles, we would recoup about $100,000 of equity for those for you, right back to the county. And your maintenance and fuel expenditure, your OpEx, would reduce immediately because of that full maintenance program and the maintenance management program with the oversight.
Without the sheriff's cars?
This model shows without the sheriff's vehicles' cars, exactly. And I'll show you in just a slide or two what that cash flow model looks like for the sheriff's vehicles. And then I have a condensed version showing the replacement schedule that we've agreed upon for the most effective targets to go after for replacement after that. But essentially, the rest of this model will show, year by year, the number of replacements in that annual needs column. What I'd like to highlight here is that from year five moving forward, when you start to see the equity leased come into play, that's us strategically cycling these vehicles every year on that five-year cycle, which is our proposed cycle. And that's where you see the power of our ability to resell come into play, to get money back into the fleet budget for the county. So for the last five years, year six through 10, all the way on the right-hand side, you'll see the net cash compared to the current fleet budget. And you'll see that start to give much better returns to the county for a 10-year savings of over a million dollars. Any other questions on this model here? All right. So for the sheriff's office, this is a cash flow analysis, and I'm going to boil down all these numbers to a few very simple points. The budget last year for sheriff's vehicles was about $460,000, which would purchase approximately eight pursuit-rated, patrol-upfitted Durango Pursuit vehicles. If we were to do the equity leasing model here and compare what eight leased police vehicles would look like with the aftermarket upfits, compared to a cash purchase, we would only have a 12-month spend of about $142,000, including upfront costs and including lease payments for all 12 months on all eight vehicles, compared to that $460,000 cash outlay for a purchase traditionally. So that's a cash flow savings in year one of $300-plus thousand. When you look at the term of a five-year equity lease here and recouping the money on the sale of these vehicles at five years, 100,000 miles, you're looking at a cash flow savings compared to that purchase model of about $15,000 for these eight. But this is a very conservative estimate, because the estimated equity per vehicle that I put into this model was just under $10,000, to be very conservative. One thing I'd like to point out is these are some recent sales that we've made here. In fact, these are just in February for county partners of ours here in North Carolina. The actual equity we were able to recoup for these two vehicles at almost this five years and 100,000 miles on the odometer. You guys can see on the right-hand side, averaging out to about $16,500 per vehicle in equity. So when you add that to the model I just previously showed for the cash outlay model, you're talking about, you know, about $7,000 more in equity per vehicle than what I showed on the previous slide.
What happens to vehicles that may be involved in accidents?
It's a great question. So because we are doing the equity leasing model, traditionally speaking, your insurance payout would be the same as if you had owned the vehicle. And so if you had a vehicle that was totaled out, you would take your insurance check back from that vehicle being totaled, and we would order you a new vehicle. If it's an immediate need, we have to go out of dealer stock for, we can get that for you within days to replace that vehicle that was totaled and just apply the funds from that insurance check towards the upfront costs and lease payments for that vehicle.
Renee, are we, this was considered or talked about, would this include all the county cars or just?
I think we have, we have two different proposals, one with all county vehicles and then one with the sheriff's office.
I just see it separate, so I just want to see.
We want to, we want to move forward with all of our vehicles, actually, yeah.
So this slide here, I will boil this down to just describing, this is me having worked with the department heads here on an actual replacement worksheet. So using that 10-year model that I reviewed with you, as well as that cash flow analysis for the sheriff's vehicles, we were able to identify a total of 30 vehicles that would be the most aged and most critical to be able to cycle to newer vehicles here. What I've done is I've done a comparison for each build of each vehicle by department to look at the best-in-class from a total cost of ownership perspective for what's going to be the most economical with all costs considered, CapEx and OpEx, as well as the resale value of those vehicles. I've then taken the order-to-delivery timelines, which is what we work with on the manufacturers, to understand if we put an order in today, how many weeks would it take to build, ship, have here in your hands? And I've put together the year-one budget for those 30 vehicles and exactly what it would impact the county for month by month. The top table shows you a cumulative budget impact, basically by adding up the maintenance management program, the lease charges and the upfront costs, plus the resale value of each vehicle we're looking at replacing. And so for all 30 vehicles here, which includes 16 from the, excuse me, 19 from the sheriff's office and 11 from other departments, for 30 total. For 30 total vehicles, the estimated net budget, including the resale gains from the vehicles being replaced, would be $343,000. So this would be taking that 10-year model proof-of-concept, me looking at the entire fleet, spec-ing vehicles with the aftermarket needed for every single department, which I've worked on directly here with county leadership on, and putting together this budget profile, showing you upfront costs, which is your tax tag title, as well as the aftermarket outfit cost. We do have to take a 50% down payment on aftermarket upfits of $10,000 or greater, which are a few of the sheriff's vehicles, and a 25% down payment on aftermarket costs between $5,000 and $10,000. And so that's where you see the upfront cost there in August being $140,000, because that would be around when the sheriff's vehicles would land and be getting upfit. And then you'll see the estimated monthly payments in the middle column there, and then the estimated cumulative budget impact for the fiscal year 2526. I separated the resale gains as well, so you could see it without the resale gains. It would be basically a half-million dollars. But add in the resale gains, conservatively estimated resale gains from what we would be replacing in the aged vehicles, and that brings your net impact for 2526 fiscal year down to that $343,000.
Do you have maintenance history on the Durangos versus the Ford Explorers?
Yes, we do. And so that's part of the analysis that I ran, was looking at that total cost of ownership part. The good thing about cycling these vehicles at a strategic time of getting out of them before 100,000 miles or five years is that we can avoid some of those more major instances of repairs that we've seen historically. I have plenty of examples of bad things happening right after that 100,000-mile mark. But from a net cost of ownership, the Durango comes out better than the Ford. The other piece on that, and I appreciate you bringing it up, from a net cost of acquisition, we have higher incentives for government clients on the Durangos, and there's a quicker order-to-delivery time on those as well. And so the Durangos came out at a lower acquisition price as well, whereas the resale value of them for the Ford was not that different from the Durango there. So from a CapEx perspective, that Durango was also winning as well. Any other questions here on the budget impact for upcoming fiscal year? All right. So I did mention earlier, a local dedicated account team. My counterparts at my office include some client strategy managers. And so what this looks like is you'd have a client strategy manager assigned to your account to do ongoing fleet analysis, similar to what I've done to put a plan together to optimize the fleet here. They'd be doing this yearly for you and looking at the fleet throughout the year constantly. You'd also have access to what we call an account fleet coordinator. That's your day-to-day contact that handles all the behind-the-scenes and takes that administrative burden off of the county. And so from a fleet planning perspective, your client strategy manager is critical. This is something where it's not calling a 1-800 number and putting in a support ticket. This is something where you have direct access to that person and multiple avenues of communication, and they're proactively bringing recommendations to the county to stay ahead of any windfalls in the industry. One example would be right now with what we're seeing with different tariffs and whatnot being placed on vehicles. It's a lot of economic uncertainty in the automotive industry. We're expecting the model year 26 production times to be delayed this year as the manufacturers try to put plans in place to mitigate their higher expenses. And those are the kind of things that our client strategy managers bring to our clients in order to get ahead of that and mitigate tough economic times ahead when it comes to vehicle price increases, maintenance price increases, and all of those things. So to recap, the main points that we're looking to achieve here on the results side of this slide, again, is a reduced administrative time for all Vance County stakeholders, more time and resources back for core duties for every department. We're looking at a reduction in capital expenditure and a decreased cash outlay burden and a better, more predictable budget management system. Monthly vehicle payments wouldn't be due until the month after vehicle delivery. So even if we were to order vehicles now, we're not looking at these payments, as I showed on that year-one budget impact, starting until new fiscal year, actually about a month after the new fiscal year starts. So that's where the proactiveness of this plan comes into play with planning for this upcoming year. And I mentioned on that 10-year model, an immediate reduction in maintenance and fuel expenditure by refreshing some of these vehicles and fleet. Based on the model, we'd be looking at, by full implementation, almost a 50% reduction in maintenance expenditure and a pretty heavy fuel reduction as well. The reduced downtime of the fleet in conjunction with the increased safety features and a more frequently refreshed fleet would put us on that five-year cycle point, which would put the fleet in a very healthy spot. So from a due diligence process, just to update here, here we are at our pre-council meeting, our special workshop. The dates of the next council meeting, as everyone's well aware, would be April 7. We've worked through this year-one budget and the menu pricing with county leadership here and put together this year-one budget. So I'd love to jump into some Q and A here, as we have a few more minutes for, to be able to talk about perhaps submitting for agenda and bringing to official vote for that next council meeting. So, questions?
Burden that'll take over you as the county?
So from a maintenance standpoint?
A whole, old process of kind of all our business?
So as far as maintenance, you want?
Yeah, and I was gonna, I was, I can't really speak to that when it comes to maintenance, because that's not my day-to-day. But does the sheriff's office want to speak on what that takes off of your office as far as vehicle maintenance and fleet? No?
De-raid.
We have, we have an issue with management.
Kelly, is this being carried with the public? Can you accept the microphone so that people in the, that on Zoom or whatever can hear us?
So normally, they would come to me directly. If they have a problem with a vehicle, we have to figure out which vendor would be the most proper one to send it to for maintenance or repair, whether it be a wreck or tires or just oil change. Then after that, we get it approved, have, every week I have to go around and pick up invoices, get them all submitted, then they go to our finance for payment. And once we do that, then I have to enter everything into our Quartermaster or Southern Software that puts everything into a database for us, so we can go back and look and see what was done. They basically would handle all of that. So it would take a lot of pressure off of us.
So what's the process of getting vehicles? Who, you all have to look, so they will handle all the vehicles?
They do all of it.
And so, so what does you all process?
So like, so like last year, we budgeted $461,000 just for the sheriff's office to purchase eight vehicles.
So they look for their car?
They do, yes, ma'am, uh-huh.
So who looks for it now? We just go to Enterprise?
Enterprise, we handle everything.
I want to make it simple for all.
Yeah, and I think the biggest seller for me, or the biggest point for me is, you know, we spent $461,000 last year purchasing vehicles. This is $343 for 30 new vehicles, which could be county-wide vehicles, not just the sheriff's office. So not only is it a savings, but it benefits other departments that have aging vehicles as well. So like, our tax department has a vehicle, and the vehicle knocks or makes noise, so people know, oh, that's Vance County's vehicle. So, and just because we haven't replaced it, so just trying to keep costs down, so.
In the county, we have a total of 30 vehicles altogether?
No, 97. I think 97 vehicles, county, county. But we could possibly replace 30 after July 1st.
Okay.
And so then, over time, we would replace the rest of it?
It would be on a replacement schedule, yeah.
We have to do an RFP for this process?
I don't believe so. From my understanding, we do not. I believe it's sole source. The board would just have to approve the contract. I wouldn't be able to. The board would have to approve it, because it's sole source.
All right, well, other counties done it. They do, they just approve it like she's saying?
Yes. So because we are on Sourcewell, I pulled up this for reference real quick. Sourcewell is the cooperative purchasing agreement, Co-op, if you will, that we won the bid for, for fleet management services for government partners. Because of that cooperating purchase agreement, there's no need for RFP or to bid this out, if you will. It's really up to a strategic decision here as to if this is mutually beneficial.
So the board could say? So the board could take official action at the April meeting, so we can start to budget for it. But we also have to go to the LGC because we're on the unit assistance list. And so any contracts that are, I believe, fifty thousand dollars or more, the LGC has to approve it. So we do need to, if the board desires for us to move forward, then we would have to take this to you all. You all would have to approve it in April, so we can start the process for July first.
I'd like to say something I think would be of advantage to us. For the last several years, we have been struggling trying to find cars. And when Enterprise can buy a bulk of cars and have those cars stockpiled, it'd be a lot more easy for us to obtain cars.
And one of the things I like in terms of listening to you mentioning the Durango in terms of, I had a guy used to work on, work on my cars and everything. He now works for Westgate and Rod, and he said that the Durango, the Dodge cars and everything probably has less maintenance than any, than, than any of the other, like we mentioned Ford and stuff like that. He saw less problems with that car, with the Dodge Durango than, than you're talking about, than he saw with other.
Yes, sir. And, and that's something that we evaluate consistently because of the data points we have with two million-plus vehicles in our rental fleet, in our rental operations, plus almost a million vehicles under management with our fleet management clients. In addition to the poll we have with the manufacturers to be able to have transparent data provided to us, we're talking about millions of data points when it comes to the maintenance on these vehicles. We've also partnered with Ernst &amp; Young to build a program that lets us look at the total cost of ownership of these vehicles by loading all those data points in, being able to compare them side by side. So you're absolutely right. That could very well change next year if they use different parts. We don't know, but that's where the power of our infrastructure and how in tune we are with the industry helps us to guide those decisions as we move forward.
Yes. Hey, folks, I wanted to add one thing that may blow your mind because I, I can't fathom it. We're under the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal budget. Okay. We got eight cars in our budget for this year. We have accepted delivery of one, and it's March of twenty-twenty-five. One vehicle of eight has been delivered. The problem is, we don't have the bargaining power that larger departments have. We order eight. They're ordering thirty, forty, fifty. Our cars are coming in, sold to somebody else. I mean, last month, we were looking at twelve to sixteen weeks before we can get our cars because they haven't even been built yet. Well, the problem is, we submit a budget request for eight cars. It's not a wish list is what is required to keep us up and running. Okay, so if we're going to conceivably get cars that we ordered in July in May-June of the coming year, that's another thirty, forty thousand miles that's been put on the card that would have been replaced. And then your resale value is, is, is tanking every month that we don't have these cars. But I have never seen cars ordered in July, and we don't have them on the road by September, October. It, you know, it's Vance County. We just have no bargaining power. But we will literally have the cars that we ordered twenty-four, twenty-five on the road probably by the end of May.
That's a good point to bring up, just to follow up on that here a little bit. The proactive planning that I referenced is how we really circumvent these kind of situations where we're waiting ten, eleven months for vehicles. Historically, what we've seen is with so many agencies in the past making cash purchases, July first is a very busy day for car dealers in North Carolina. Because we can look at these order-to-delivery timelines and time the ordering of these vehicles, whereas they won't land until the new fiscal year, but we're putting orders in months in advance. We can even set need-buy dates with certain manufacturers. We get ahead of that curve, and when the aftermarket outfit shops end up having all these vehicles come in in July or August, we're at the front of the line for, for our clients.
The only thing, when I'm looking through this, the only thing I'd, I'd like to see more breakdown on specific departments and the requests from specific departments on some of these vehicles.
Okay, we can get that.
I'd be happy to put that list together. I've got a file that I use to kind of put that year-one budget together that'll show you exactly that.
Okay.
We Chevrolet family ourselves. I throw that out there. We Chevrolet families ourselves. I thought I threw that out there when I heard the Ford people.
All right, we can change which vehicles department by department.
Do y'all have any more questions? Yeah, okay, all right. So are you all okay with us moving forward with just continuing to have the conversations and research? Okay, all right, good deal. Right. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate y'all for having me and your agenda today.
Thank you. We'll be in contact.
Thank you.
Next thing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you for having that all set up for me. Last time I was.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda today is committee meetings online. So there was a request from a citizen to livestream all of our committee meetings, even audit committee meetings. So that would involve IT having to set up for every time we have a committee meeting in this room. And you know, sometimes we have committee meetings. It might be two one day, two the next day. So how do you all feel about having committee meetings? Like if, if, if we have a month in which there's a work session that we don't have anything to discuss, like similar to today?
So what's it different then I'm coming, they can still come to the meetings and it's, and about as open?
So I think the concern of that citizen was they were not able to make that particular audit committee meeting. So they just want to livestream all of our meetings moving forward.
How would? I believe our, our downstairs is set up, we had an I O L or whatever it is one time.
I have to ask Randall. Do we have an O L? Oh, okay. It's not as easy as this room. Downstairs is a little bit more difficult to livestream than it is in this space.
What would we have to do to make that work? That would be, I guess.
I mean, we can make it work, but I guess my concern is IT only has three staff members. So it would involve them having to attend all of these meetings normally. I know Randall isn't here today, but we do like to have IT staff available when we have committee meetings. I guess my only concern is, let's say we have five committee meetings in one week. That takes IT away from things that they should be doing and having to be here with us. I mean, we can do it. It's not.
But is it just, I mean, you know, I believe information can all, anybody that, you know, is that normal? I mean, I know.
So these type.
Committee meetings.
Is it normal to livestream them?
Or can we, um?
Or are you saying our committee meetings normal?
For just to be live?
Every, um.
Most counties, do most people, counties people do that?
Well, this is the first county I've worked for that actually had committees, so it's hard for me to say.
Because you know, I go, I'm in committee meetings and I, I haven't seen that.
Prior to COVID, there was no such thing as.
Sometimes I can see it really in our committee meetings unless we having a virtual, and that's still just with the people that you, you, that's on the virtual line, that's in the committee, in the meeting.
Right. Yeah, there, there's no, I don't think, we can't do hybrid. Yeah, we can't do hybrid meetings. Can't do virtual. Yeah, okay, yeah, right, that's right. We can't do that because the executive order expired after COVID. So we can't do hybrid or virtual meetings. I think it's just they want all committee meetings. The request was for all committee meetings to be livestreamed, just like what we're doing right now.
I understand the transparency part of it.
Absolutely.
Uh, and it makes for a better government. But.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm just saying, like I said, we only got three. And they will have to be, and we have a lot of committee meetings sometimes.
Sometimes we do. And it's worked out perfect.
And, and the, the citizen, it's not about keeping people out. We know we're very transparent, so they can always receive any information that they need.
Yeah.
So I was just trying to look out because we limited in staff.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about IT staff and having to set up whatever meeting. That's all.
Be a way so that IT staff, we all be able to just say, okay, we, hit the button, meeting starts, dial-ins, YouTube, whatever. No? Yeah, I mean, I.
Can we get more clarity?
Maybe some setup costs on it.
From IT?
When they come, at the meeting, put this back on their agenda and let them.
Yeah.
Express to a committee.
A committee, yeah.
Yeah.
So would that be technology? See, that's another.
So take it to the technology committee meeting. Is that what you all are suggesting?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, let's put it there.
Library alone.
Okay. Okay, and so the next item on here is Roberts Rules of Order. Commissioner Perry raised a question about board procedures and rules of order for when you all are conducting meetings. I think she just wanted to have a general conversation about that.
So can y'all hear me? Okay, so somebody called me on the phone and said, y'all ragly. Y'all don't do Roberts Rules of Orders. And so I said, I don't know.
They said we was what?
Ragly.
Ragly?
Ragly, disorderly, no Roberts Rules of Order. So I went to the COTS meeting, and that's the first thing they give you is a Roberts Rules of Orders book. So I just showed it to her and asked her.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that the board has never adopted any official policy or rules of order.
I think most boards of commissioners do not have Roberts Rules of Order.
That's true. Oh, okay.
That's because of, there's some technicalities in Roberts Rules.
That kind of boxes you in. That's what I heard. Yeah.
So that's why, Jonathan, you can probably.
Yeah, and I mean, generally, the idea behind not having the formal Roberts Rules of Order in the current edition adopted is because it gets quite complicated and technical. And the idea of this meeting is to allow you guys to do your business and not rely on the technicalities of Roberts Rules. I remember when I was in college, I used to study Roberts Rules for a, the North Carolina student legislature that I was involved with. Why? Because it was a tactic and it was a way to get what you needed done if I knew Roberts Rules better than somebody else. And so the, that's generally the idea behind not having formally adopted and putting in place that we follow Roberts Rules of Orders in our meetings because it generally allows you guys to do what you need to do and not have to technically know the formalities of when, how, where, and who can make a motion to approve, to reconsider, or bring other things up.
Thank you. So I didn't have an answer, but we now have an answer.
YouTube. Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, I don't like when somebody asks me a question
Right.
and I don't have an answer.
That's right.
So it's out here now. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and so the next thing on the list is a social, social media for board members and for members appointed to our county boards. The mayor called me maybe first part of January because she had some concerns about someone that's appointed to one of our committees. And I believe this person was something, I don't know what they put on social media, but she just wanted me to bring to the attention of the board of commissioners that we should possibly consider adopting a policy for social media for elected officials and for those that you all appoint to your boards. So I didn't know if that's something that you all wanted to explore in the future or right now.
We have policies for social.
This for employees, employees, but it doesn't apply to you all.
But we're not employees.
Correct.
We are public officials and, you know, we, we do what we do. I, I'm not really interested in.
Yeah.
So what was her concern?
Her concern was, it's a person that we have that's appointed to one of our county boards, posted something on social media. She didn't share, she didn't share with me what the post was, but she just wanted us to consider having something in place for people that we appoint to our boards. But she didn't share with me what was on social media. She just had some concerns about their post on social media.
Didn't the city?
But I still think.
Didn't the city adopt something about social media?
They did. They adopted a policy last fall, last summer, as it related to a comment that a council member made on social media. Yes, sir.
Yeah, they, they, they had a pretty, they had a pretty blatant post that, that required adoption of a policy to eliminate the appearance of it being on behalf of the city.
We want to acknowledge that each of us are individuals, and whatever we post is not a part of Vance County, then so be it. But other than that, I don't see any need for us really get grossed in that.
So the main thing and the, the, the one thing that I would add that the cases have started to differentiate and define is how when elected officials speak on their personal social media platforms, how and if it possibly carries the weight and implores or includes liability of the, the government. The, the one case that has found some liability was not an elected official, but was an appointed official. And they were posting on their private social media page, I believe it was Facebook. But it was very clear and open and apparent that they had the authority, or the apparent authority, to speak on behalf. I believe it was the city. And, and so that, that's, that's where the benefit of a social media policy, to the extent that I would have any recommendation that we have one, is that if you do it, you all agree, or more importantly, the, the biggest thing is that you guys are aware and know that you do not speak on behalf of the county and you do not make it appear that way. That's, that's really the extent that you guys have concerns about each other speaking on behalf of the county or having the apparent authority to appear that you have that authority, speak on behalf of the county. The way that we're set up, no one of you individually has that authority. But obviously, you can go out there and say, me and my fellow commissioners, we believe, or we all agree, that's not proper, that's not correct. But that's the one thing that I would say and suggest for you guys to formally agree to. The problem with that is, is this is pretty much just a gentleman's agreement. Unless you guys agree, there's some type of discipline that can be imposed, but then you still have to vote and carry out and impose that discipline because it's all self, self-govern and self-imposed discipline on you guys as elected officials.
Because I was, you know, even though we're not employees, but I, hopefully that we would be respectful enough, but don't include me in your post.
That's right.
You, you know, speaking for me.
That's right.
Um, so I, I, I agree, I, I think that is important. But I was also thinking that as a county commissioner, that I would have the integrity and the decency to be aware, careful what I would put on Facebook. If, if employees have to have a standard, we should have a standard as well when it comes to putting things on the social media that's concerning.
So I would say not a standard. I'm not going to get into creating standards for, for you as elected officials.
I'm talking about integrity in that.
I would, I would, and, and the biggest thing, like I said, is an acknowledgement and an understanding that you do not speak on behalf of the county as a whole. So, so if anything, the most that I would suggest is that we, we put together a policy that you guys adopt that clearly says that.
Yes.
But nothing, nothing more. Again, not getting into standards, not getting into what you can and can't say. I have, I, I, I do not believe that's an area we even need to start stepping into.
Take the word standard, but I still said the integrity because at the end of the day, he raised a standard that we have decent, decency and an order when it comes to, you know, when it concern is board and what we should, because if employees have, have a, a policy in place for social media, media, we should be as respectful as well in the same situation concerning.
Okay.
That's my two cents.
So we'll work with Jonathan on drafting something to get to you all for consideration based off his recommendations. So the last thing up under general government is a nutrition program. I think for the past two weeks, I've included a proposal from GROW, which is Green Rural Redevelopment Organization. They have some grant funding, and they want to provide food boxes to approximately nine hundred households in Vance County every two weeks with a fresh vegetable box targeting Medicaid recipients. And it's my understanding that only thing they need from us is just support from the county commissioners as well as information, identification information from the Department of Social Services to identify those households that are in a food desert, I believe that's what it is. So I just was looking for, there's no cost to the county at all.
So what support should they looking for, just to spread the news?
So I guess like, like just, I guess being a partner and assisting, well, getting with Department of Social Services to identify those households. Were you going to say something?
I have two concerns.
Okay.
One being the, the current state of funding at the federal level. That money comes from the federal.
I asked him about that, and he said that his, from what he explained to me is that the funding is secure as of right now. We had that conversation. That's what he said.
The other concern I have is releasing individuals' names and privacy concerns.
Could they somehow, um, um, place the, if they got boxes, place it at the social, if they want to do that, then recipient can come?
I think social services would be responsible for notification to those recipients. I think social services would be responsible for notification to those recipients, not Grow. And so there would be a, a spot in which they would set up and you can come pick, pick the food boxes up.
But then Grow would have that, that information.
Well, not necessarily. It would be a pickup spot. You just come and pick it up.
Yeah.
It's just like a drive.
They can opt in or opt out.
Right, right.
Do it at church on a certain day, just come pick it up.
Right, yeah, you just have a.
That's, that's.
Yeah, they wouldn't get their information. Yeah.
That, that, that run one concern to me.
It's just like any other that I see these nonprofit organization having all these food.
Uh huh, box, just come pick up the food.
Pick up, you know, if they need it.
How do you know that one's not?
Don't necessarily know, but.
No, we don't.
There's nothing we can really.
But it, but it's.
I know, but.
Come to make sure people, and, and, and a good thing about it, you got some people that can't, that not maybe associated with dealing with social service, but they in need.
And social services could even, I guess, maybe give out passes or some, some type of pass to each recipient. They just put, turn the, like a number, like a little ticket and you go pick up your box. Not necessarily identifying who you are, but you just have, have a ticket when you, you can get the ticket from social services or something like that.
Already down. Have any people from social?
Oh, I know, I know. And of course, we'll work with Sandy to make sure that it's doable. We won't put an extra burden on her.
We're just going to identify a way to get through that.
Okay.
All that.
That's a valid concern.
But I'm pretty sure people would love, they would pick up a fresh box. And if they don't want it to, Commissioner Frankham did.
What do y'all decide? What, what?
I think Commissioner Perry had some comments. No.
I'm trying to figure, what are we going to do now? What are we going to do?
So I was gonna, as long as we can get past the privacy issue, are you all okay with moving forward?
I've, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, I've read through the materials a couple of times on a couple of different days. I just can't figure out what it is they're asking us to do.
That's why I said, what support?
Yeah, the only thing that, yeah, I mean, just.
And so my, my concern is this, by us officially partnering with them, are we excluding other providers from getting a portion of the funding? Or are we directing the funding and making it only available for Grow? And additionally, are we showing favoritism to Grow by making this partnership?
Okay.
And that concerns me because we have previously partnered leased facilities to this organization that they were going to outfit and refit our kitchen over at Eaton Johnson. And they later decided they weren't going to do that.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And so, so it's, it's, it's fairness in the upfront ask.
Okay.
And what is our partnership with them doing? But additionally, their ability to follow through, I've got some concerns because they were just let out of that prior lease and had not done anything.
Okay.
There's some mention of Duke's Health, whatever that program is they're doing in that.
There, there is some tie in with some type of a study or something with Duke that they're involved with.
I, I thought when I read it, it said something about, once we finish with that program or whatever, it was kind of.
They wanted to tie it into that program and they want to, they want to, they want to set this up and, and pretty much the same way or make it part of that program is what I gather. But again, at the end of the day, I can't tell what the ask is and, and what the purpose of the ask is for.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get some more information.
Then you have, also you had the, the mental health support, the, those people, those kind of things with it. I don't know if that interferes with what we're doing currently with, with.
By Hill.
Or what?
Okay.
Or if they working together.
Okay, I'll get more information.
Because to me, if they have their, I mean, they should, to me, if you want to partner with DSS or somehow they should, I feel like that should be handled through them.
Yeah, she, they hadn't spoken, they, they hadn't spoken to Sandy yet. We just kind of wanted board support before we reached out to.
Or since you got your own nonprofit organization, you, if you want to hand out boxes to needed people or whatever, their marketing and let people know their location and the baby come and let them know what they offering to the community. It's assistance and help.
Okay.
It's mine.
Okay, I'll get some more information and bring back to you.
Nonprofit organization, right?
Uh, yes, sir.
Nonprofit.
I guess what I'm seeing here, what you all say, that, I don't mean to make it sound, they don't need us, we don't need them. It's the bottom line.
Essentially. You're right.
You know, they're going to do what they're going to do. And whether we partner with them or not. And it's like these organizations I see that give out, you know, like the Durham Rescue Mission and everything, they give out food boxes and stuff like that.
Right.
So they don't partner with any of that. That's their, that's their mission and their goal.
So, yeah, you're just saying they can essentially set up without us.
Yeah, they can do it without, without our support. We can just say, we can say we support what they're doing, but you don't have to sign.
Right, and I think, I think our role was just to identify the households that are not served by, I think it's some type of mile radius for Meals on Wheels, one and a half miles from Meals on Wheels.
Something like that, something like that.
Yeah, okay.
And, and. They get that information, that, that's public information, right? In terms of households, what they're looking for.
It would be Medicaid recipients.
And the, the other thing, I guess, the concern was if we advocate and get in the food business and then something happens to the funding, somebody's going to say, well, okay, Vance County, you pick it up.
Right.
And we're not in that position.
That's fair.
I don't see us getting in the food business where they ask, I don't think they asking, I don't see us getting into the food business. I, I'm like you, I don't know why they even ask us. Yes, I, I don't get that. That's what I don't get. There's, there's a reason they're. I think they want to add credibility to what they're doing, but they don't need, they don't really need us to do what they're doing. That's what I'm, because I ride down Raleigh Road and you see these folks passing out food. People line up to get it and everything. You go on Chest, where is it? Chestnut and Burl Avenue someplace, there's a group that passes up. You ride by and they giving it out and everything.
Game free always, you know, Mayor Elton is always having those food drives.
I think it's safe to say we support what they're doing and move on. Get, like, any more information?
Okay. Okay. All right, so more information for that. Next is properties. So youth services use, use of Eaton Johnson Gym. So after the shelter opened and closed last year, well, actually when the shelter opened, we realized that that facility was not taken care of very well. Youth Services and Parks and Rec have been using the Eaton Johnson Gym for a period of time without any type of MOU. So they've been renting the space for funerals for a while. I found that out, I think, when I first started on, when I first came on board. Um, so they've been essentially using it the same way they use ACOG Recreation. So my question to this board is, do we want to continue them to allow, continue to allow them to use that space just as they use ACOG Recreation? I know ACOG, we're, we're, we're split with them in that facility, but Eaton Johnson Gym is our, is our facility. So.
Youth Serv, what youth program, are they having any youth program? You said youth service.
Youth Services is a hundred percent county funded program. We.
Are they doing anything for the, you know, because I, like, I, I knew they was having funerals as well. But are they having any kind of programs to say?
They do. They have programming all year long in both facilities, actually. And so when I talked to Kendrick and I talked to the city manager, you know, I was just trying to figure out what the, what the impact would be if, if the Board of Commissioners, if we all decided to allow them to no longer use the facility in the manner that they're using it. And so Kendrick expressed to me that they won't be able to house Youth Services, which is a department that we have, we, we have housed for years because we funded a hundred percent. Before they were in Henry Dennis, um, let's see what else. He said a department, just, they would have to find a different location for Youth Services programs. They won't be able to provide gym basketball league effectively due to the loss of the gym. Vance County Schools has limited access because of the middle and high school consolidation. So I guess my biggest concern is they've been allowed to do so without anything in writing for years since they've been in that gym. So what do we want them to?
So the youth service, how do we end up doing it for funerals?
That was before my time, I don't know. Funeral. So they rent out the facility and they get revenue.
For funerals, so.
What, there are two issues here. One is the office space of Youth Services. When we went in, when we had the shelter, we went in there, it was trashed. The offices were trashed. We had to do all kinds of cleanup just to get people in there to work. The restrooms were nasty. They hadn't maintained it so.
Yeah.
Okay, then you go to the gym side. Somebody had gone in, the showers, all the toilets had been busted, the shower heads had been ripped off, the partitions had been taken off the toilets, they'd just been torn all to pieces.
So who responsible for the maintenance?
There was no agreement.
Yeah, there's never been agreement. And it's my understanding, I don't know how true this is, it's before my time, but apparently Jordan and Danita had an agreement that the DSS custodial staff would handle the cleaning of the Eaton Johnson Gym, but Danita didn't enforce it. So Parks and Rec was, it's my understanding, was never told that they were responsible for cleaning because Danita should have had her custodial staff cleaning that space. So I can't answer that because that was way before my time, but.
Pile of money while that shelter was operating to fix things that were torn up. And still had to get porta-johns out there because the toilets were destroyed in the gym.
We had to vote it out there. The bathroom was terrible.
Yeah.
Don't even, when I went to use, I would, I just turned around.
And that's so.
So, and I will, and I will say that after the shelter closed, the city spent about thirteen thousand dollars to do deep cleaning, bed bug treatment, some type of deep clean. They spent like thirteen thousand dollars to get it cleaned up after, and they moved all the trash out afterwards so they could start back using the facility.
We need something in writing.
Absolutely.
We need something in writing.
We do, and, and I think, I know that, but I'm just trying to figure out, do you all want to allow them to use that space for rentals? Like for funerals?
No, it needs to be for.
Youth Services.
Youth Services, youth basketball, that kind of thing.
I agree. No rentals at all. So Youth Services only because we have to house that program.
I think they use it for the rec league basketball too, which that's not part of Youth Services. Youth Services, I believe, is a kind of a correction type program.
Uh huh, it is. That's right. And so I think, and they also want to update.
They got fees for that?
They pay fees. The rec fee, you pay rec fees. They used to, I don't know what they do now.
So we, we in charge of, who the fee go to? The rec department to?
Yeah, the, the funding.
Their, their revenue, okay.
Yeah, so it's my understanding at one point, Youth Services funding used to flow through cities, but the state changed it and it only can flow through counties. So the city just manages the program for us, but it's a hundred percent county funded. So you all agree that it should just be for Youth Services only, correct?
Yeah.
All right, want to make sure before we start building.
They need to take care of maintenance.
Make, yeah, so maintenance, yeah.
They need to have the rec clean, you know, those kind of things.
Okay.
When you say Youth Service, you're going to use for Youth Services, they, we're going to use for that. Will they have, use to use it as for Little League basketball and all that stuff? That would be my thought. Okay. I'm being.
The specific programs that are related to Youth Services only.
Well, to youth.
Okay.
Recreation, recreation, because my grandson participating ball there and everything and basketball and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So it needs to be used, needs to, only thing we need to try to eliminate that you don't, they use it, the Parks and Recreation, use it for athletics. Would be my, would be my thing in Youth Services. For, for youth athletics. For youth athletics and everything, and that would be the, that would be the agreement. And in terms, they want to rent their ACOG for weddings and funerals and stuff like that. They have the prerogative to do that, but that particular facility needs to be used for, tell me again, what we said, youth? Youth Services said youth, youth. Use for that.
And youth program.
And who, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to maintain in terms of cleaners? Are we responsible for that or?
No, they would be responsible for maintenance and cleaning.
Now, what about the repairs that need to be done for the gym area? Have they been?
Are there any repairs right now? I don't know. I don't know. I can't speak on it.
Torn all to pieces, best I understand.
You all said it was a county, um.
So what I'm trying to do this year is keep enough money in the budget that we make and fix the sewer line. See how much that's going to cost us. I'm trying to take one bit at a time to, um.
So the sewer line, we, I thought we got that flowing.
Uh-uh.
Oh, no.
Uh-uh.
No, I just had them out here last week. But I, I think we have narrowed it down to where it is between this spot and this spot. I'm hoping we won't have to spend a whole lot of money, but fix that one area is what I'm hoping.
I mean, what the problem was when we had the shelter there was people were going in and putting too much paper and whatever in the toilets. And then we had to, we had to actually blow it out. We had to go up on the roof and snake it.
Yep.
And go out that way.
What we found out last week, and he thinks, when we run the jet in it, it actually come out the back of the building, which it should be coming to the front. So we think there's a coupling in there that's going the wrong way.
There's a clean out, which makes no sense.
Yep.
There's a clean out on the back of the building.
Yep.
And then there's a clean out on the front of the building, and there's a line that goes down to the back.
Yep. There's one line that comes out the back, I think, is tied into possibly the gutters. But it doesn't explain where that, why it comes out, that clean out in the back.
But the line goes from the showers and stuff in the gym. It comes through to where the restrooms are in the office part.
Yep.
And it goes back into the hallway between the social services and the gym.
Right.
And then comes out through the back. And then there's another one that goes down from the corner of the gym, goes down to the street.
Yeah, they, they think there's a, a wire or a combination in that floor they put in the baggage. Because it shouldn't have come out the back of the building, it should have went to the front.
Is anybody that used to work with the school system that was still around that would be aware if they had problems with it?
Yeah, we've seen the plans. We've got the plans.
Yeah.
But.
Plans while we were. I mean, just to see if it was a maintenance issue when the schools had it.
I mean, I can check and see.
That'd be good if we could find somebody.
What I'm trying to do is see how the budget goes with.
The county, the maintenance.
The school system had their own maintenance.
That's what I'm talking about, the school system maintenance. They would be the one that, um, we know.
If the people are still around.
Most of them, they ain't going nowhere.
But what we're trying to do with the budget is see how much it's going to cost us with the sewer line first and then work to the partitions. So taking a little bit at a time. We got the heat and air done in the last urgency.
Kev noted.
Is there any way to go back? Because that's identified as an emergency shelter. We could have used some, some, some nine-one-one funds on the air conditioning that.
You mean go back and see if we can charge it too? Okay, we can, we can find out. Get with Vivian on that.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Why did we move, since we're talking about that building? Why did we move the election from the city of, is it Operation Management to, to Eaton?
Because the city told us that we couldn't use their space anymore.
There was a lot of, um.
Yeah. Yeah, we were told that we could no longer use, what's the name of the building? Their Operation Center. Uh huh. They told us that we couldn't use it. That's why. We had to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know the reasoning behind it, but they, we were told.
It's so much easier there.
Yeah.
When I, when I noticed about being there this, during the election.
Yeah, the city made the decision to allow us to no longer use that space anymore.
What happened this past time was we ended up with that shelter at the same time we had the election.
Mm-hmm, and we had to move it. Mm-hmm. Yeah, but yeah, but they advised us before May.
It's difficult. It was so much easier at the other place.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. Okay, so we'll work on that MOU and bring it back to you all for consideration. Um, so water, and this is, um, the, the additional county water lines is just something I just wanted to make you all aware of. I've had several business owners to call me from, I believe it's Industry Drive? Is Industry Drive where Mako is? Yes.
That's City.
Okay, well, it, it was my understanding that this, this person told me that he didn't have city water. And he was wondering why we don't have county water lines coming through Industry Drive.
We're not allowed to have water lines within a certain distance of the city lines.
Oh, okay, that's down.
I had, um, I had, I had one of the business owners call me and I checked into it. They are, it is city.
Well, why didn't he tell me something? It's probably the same person. He told me something totally different. Okay, go ahead.
It probably is.
It probably was the same.
But it is a city.
Okay. Oh, okay, well, that's what I'll tell you.
Because they actually run the water line down past the school.
Okay.
Um, and the Industry Drive comes off in the port.
Okay, has he been a business owner for like thirty years here?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, well, we can move on to the next. Well, you want to stay up here and talk about the twenty-ten contracts and signups? Since we, we can move right on from after that. We can move on, move forward?
The, the issue that we're having, and we understand that the one-twenty-five fee and then the thirty dollar a month fee was to go to help with the water lines. But we have several people who signed up in two thousand and ten who no longer want the water. They don't want to have the tap, they don't want anything. So at this point, I don't know what y'all would like for me to tell them. I mean, I, we have some that want reimbursement for the one-twenty-five, and I understand not reimbursing, but the ones that do not want the tap, where do we go from there?
And they signed contracts in twenty.
They signed contracts.
That's a giant issue, I guess, to express. That's a, a giant issue, I guess, to express a legal opinion on that maybe, whatever.
I just needed to know which direction to get.
Do you have, is it like several?
And I've had five or six at least call me, and they're asking EnviroLink on a regular basis.
I mean, everybody gonna come up.
So, my understanding in the past, when we first, before we knew this, this argument was out there, we went ahead and put in all of the taps for the people who signed up for wet taps at the cheap price. And then they came back and said, thank you for the tap, but we don't want to pay the monthly fee. So rather than us trying to further grow our account receivable on taps where folks aren't going to pay, I would suggest that we get them to tell, tell us in writing that they no longer desire that tap and would like to receive a refund of their deposit on that wet tap. So that we develop a system out that doesn't put taps in the ground for folks who have no desire to use them.
Those taps were originally Kitchell Water Association signups, correct?
Yep.
I don't, I, I.
They are.
Yeah.
They are.
Some of them, some of them's Kitchell, and, and a significant number of them outside of Kitchell was the counties. The county gave them to Kitchell when they were gonna do it, and then when we bought the system out, we got all of them back, less the deposits for the Kitchell folks. But I believe Jordan, prior to now, accepted the lack of deposits from Kitchell and may have refunded some folks in areas that was determined we were not going to develop.
But what is the refund amount they would get, receive at? One hundred and twenty five?
Hundred and twenty five.
Jonathan, and what's those, with, that was the ref, you said, if those were people that it didn't go, the line, it didn't go down, or they just, the line didn't go, they didn't put the line there, they got the hundred and twenty five back?
A line may have gone by their house, we did not give them a wet tap, if you will. And, and what I mean by that is put a, a meter base or a, a place available for the tap to be put in or drill under the road, incur those expenses, because we incur expenses to, to do them. And, and I know previously we have incurred all of that charge and send these people a, a monthly bill, but nothing else has been done in attempts to collect that.
But the people he talking about have all of that, have the meter, have, they don't have none of that.
The line, the line is coming, the line is coming by their house at this point.
Yeah.
And they no longer want taps.
Kind of what Jonathan's talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I thought they already, these people already had everything, and they just said, now I don't want it.
No, these are, these are people that the line is coming by.
Okay, I got you now.
But they signed up?
They've signed up.
In twenty ten.
There's no tap there, right?
No tap.
And when they signed up, they signed up with a hundred and twenty five dollar?
Hundred and twenty five dollars.
And that's what they want back? How many?
He said about six, right?
I've got about six, about six right now, but.
They want to keep their real water, essentially.
Give them the money back, move on.
Okay.
Thank you, and the other thing is just a reminder for our community event on April twenty fourth.
Yeah, our community events, um, April the twenty fourth at seven P M. at the, uh, Kitchell Community Center. Um, we're gonna have L K C there with some maps and different things. Um, one thing else too, that I just found out about this morning, on the letter y'all received on our violation, um, Mr. Brum wanted me to check and see where that was coming from. It actually come from the hydrant on the distribution line. What they typically try to do is flush the hydrants out a week prior to testing, just so they would have a true reading. That didn't get done before the testing of this, this time, and what happened is the sediment actually just stayed in that standpipe. They feel like it tested, um, high. The February tests come back good, where we need to be.
Where was that hydrant?
Um, Williamsburg. Yeah, because they tested on the last hydrant.
And if I'm just being honest, I have concerns with EnviroLink in their performance.
I mean, T T H Ms. are an indication that they're putting too much chlorine in the water to try to kill something. And what happens is the, the chlorine kills the bacteria and then it allows other bacteria to grow, and T T H M is one of those bacteria. So that comes when you get your water too hot. I've got limited knowledge on that, but just a little bit, because we had some of those issues in Kitchell a little bit.
But what, um, EnviroLink was telling me this morning is the, the sediment deposits, like they build up in that standpipe on the hydrant, and that's why they tried to flush it a week before, so we get a true reading, so, um.
Do we have the, um, actual published letter that they sent out yet?
Yeah, and they're going, they've got the letter and they're sending it out in the monthly mailings, in their monthly invoices.
Okay, so next on your list is planning and environmental, so just as an FYI, Sharana Branch came to see me last week, week before last, and she just wants to just have conversations with the, with, um, with the county about affordable housing, because I think we all know affordable housing is an issue, um, in our county. And I remember Commissioner Feimster making some comments to me when I first started about trying to assist or educate the community about affordable housing, and she had mentioned something about tiny homes, and so I think Sharana just wants to assist in any type of education that you all would want to educate the public on when it's, when we talk about housing. But we could easily partner with the Housing Authority to accomplish that as well.
Come in and present some information?
She, I told her we could do a committee meeting and she can come in and present if she wanted to.
We need to be careful there because she's a Realtor.
Mm hmm, she is.
There are several other Realtors, and we need to be careful how do that, too, personally.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We need to be careful with, with that.
I just wanted to make sure I put that on y'all's radar, um, just as FYI.
Does it tie into when we talked, remember there was a thing, a grant that wanted to affordable housing and everything, and that partner, we decided we couldn't do anything with them, does that tie into this?
It doesn't, um, that was just an educational program that we could have sent staff members to, um, but we weren't chosen for it. Um, I think Warren County was chosen.
Public housing?
Uh huh, yes, sir, it would have. And it was just an education, eighteen month educational program, so there wasn't any funding to tie it to it or anything like that, we would have just been chosen to go through an eighteen month program. So. Okay, and public safety, um, gun control in Vance County. So the young, the gentleman that spoke last Monday actually spoke at, at your March or April meeting in twenty twenty four. Um, just with his concerns of gun control, so I have the sheriff here, um, just for you all to have a discussion, um, about gun control in, in the county. He's provided some data as well, I guess, on calls that have been received in the county over, I guess dating back to twenty fifteen, shots, shots fired calls that go back to twenty fifteen, um, through twenty twenty five. And me and the sheriff spoke a little bit earlier, do you want to talk to the concerns that we talked about earlier and what's, um, what we legally can do and legally can't do?
First of all, I, I support the Second Amendment rights, right to bear arms. And we need to be very careful in what we construct about the safety in our communities and, and there's a great concern of people discharging firearms in residential areas and, and suburban areas, suburbs and whatnot, because of the close range and, um, the lack of training and knowledge in handling guns, and we have too many youths and people that should have guns, they have guns and discharging them, so I don't know what collectively we can do together to come up with something, but we just need to be careful in, in doing so. And, uh, you know, I'm not here to try to take away anyone's Second Amendment's right, because I, I don't, nobody's gonna take away my weapons, but we, just some, we need.
I think Sheriff, we had an illegal when it came to.
I don't think, I, I, I don't, I don't know if any county has imposed on any, any, um, curfews or any rulings or anything about discharging firearms in the communities, but, uh, uh, of course, uh.
Concerned, because.
Yeah, the, the number of calls, I gave, um, Ms. Perry, this is alarming of the calls to service for firearms discharge, just in the county alone.
This is just in the county?
Just in the county alone.
I thought one time that Raleigh, Wake County, there was a series of things in development where people were firing guns and things involved, what did, what did Wake County ever do? Um, Sheriff Frank, remember Wake County, there was some issues dealing with, uh, firing of guns and everything in neighborhoods in Raleigh, I mean, Wake County, and it came before their council, did they ever?
I don't know what the results was.
The, uh, a lot of the control in subdivisions should come from the restrictive covenants.
Okay.
That's where a person voluntarily gives up their right to fire an arm when they purchase a lot in their subdivision. Other than that, we've gotten the Second Amendment, and there's very little you can do. Now, if you've got a person that's irresponsibly discharging a weapon and it's coming off of their property and damaging someone else's property, then that is an issue. But that's a criminal issue, and we shouldn't have responsible people have to pay the price because there are people that are irresponsible. Those people that are doing it in an irresponsible manner should be prosecuted by whatever means necessary.
But I want to take the.
Those are numbers I have up on the screen showing from the year from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty five. And those just calls of service, the shots fired in, in the county alone, in Vance County.
But those calls come from all kinds of things.
Oh, yes.
Well, we were out skeet shooting one day on my farm.
Oh, they, yeah, they, they come from, and people hunting and.
A person a half mile away called and said that bullets were falling in New York.
But, but the alarming thing.
It's a shotgun, it shoots about fifty feet.
But the most alarming one is where, uh, these young people are shooting these assault rifles, and, and of course, we're collecting shell casings and whatnot, and uh, shooting at people's houses and, uh, things of that nature.
But that's criminal.
That's criminal, and we're dealing with that also.
But when they called, do, do the sheriff, did the department go out, did?
We respond to every shots fired called in Vance County, that's mandatory. Because what we're doing, even if it's, if it's not a criminal case, we still collect whatever shell casings we can, and, uh, we, um, turn them over to the police department, they're kniving, and we're connecting cases with criminal cases, that's a good thing.
You want to?
So they, if they reported, uh, particular people, which a person is who?
Here's, it's, it's anonymous call because they don't want to get involved, shots fired on Dick Fane Road and give a general area, and, uh, sometimes it's someone target practicing, of course, sometimes someone's shooting at someone's home.
Now, I know Edgecombe County adopted an ordinance for shooting a firearm. Edgecombe County in twenty twenty one.
What is it, within a hundred feet of?
So it has a bunch of stipulations on it, um, you can't shoot, let's see here. It's unlawful for a person to discharge a firearm within five hundred feet of a dwelling. Um, you can't shoot between the hours of eleven P M. and seven A M. Um, discharge any public street or highway right away, so there is an actual ordinance that was adopted by the board. I can send it to you all.
Be your day, won't be no shoot.
I mean, you know.
Have they, have they had to enforce it?
Yes, we did enforce it, yep.
The, the big thing.
They did, because I mean, there's, there's also fines and just a class three misdemeanor.
The, the big issue we have is that we created a, a gun range ordinance so restrictive that people can't really put a firing range in a proper place. And so, you know, our ordinance restricts, there's only like two places in Vance County that you can have a firing range, I think. One of them's out close to Tunstall Mine, and it's got to be like miles from anything else. And so.
Miles, miles from it.
And so, so our ordinance is so restrictive that, you know, you can't ride a place that would be a good place for people to shoot. And, and so, uh, our ordinance restricts that. And so that's, that's something the board did several years back. But again, there are lots of law-abiding citizens who know how to manage their weapons, you know.
But this one affect a law-abiding citizen?
Well, it does too, uh, when I got to go shoot coyotes at night, yeah, they might be two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, so it does have different hours.
When I have to go shoot coyotes at night, I have to shoot, you might be up at two o'clock in the morning.
And, and it would, because if I want to target practice, I couldn't no longer target practice on my farm because the vessel is being coached by. So it would stop me from shooting on my own property. So you have to be careful what you pick and choose with how you can fight it.
I mean, it, it's the, the, you know, you can have these intentions, but the intentions, uh, like I said, you know, I have to protect my, my livestock and those things.
Yeah.
And, and when you start doing these ordinances, and then you're gonna come out there and find me because I shot a coyote that was trying to kill my chickens, you know, we got a problem.
It's unfortunate, something that's go too far, and some residents have the sufferable.
Yeah.
Because he was a concern, so.
Okay, okay, so are we all in agreement that, um, that there's essentially nothing that we plan to put in place, correct? Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement that we don't want to start the process of researching for a policy or a change to ordinance or anything of that nature to address it.
Back to forth.
Like I said, I don't have the, I don't have the, um, I'm a dead big friend, they just, they just shoot. I said, I don't have the lot, the animals to protect and all of that stuff, so, but I, you know, I still feel some type of way with some people, I understand.
So, go ahead, I'll let you.
Now, this one does have a, a clause and exception saying shooting on one's own property with the purpose of protecting premises or occupants from dangerous or destructive animals. And also says that school sanctioned instructional recreational activities intended to further use of firearm safety. Have those provisions and the exceptions in there, rather.
So he can shoot that coyote at two o'clock?
He can, according to this.
But if you do something like Edgecombe, does, does that tire hand, at least we made, we made an effort?
What you mean, does it tire, I don't know, you have to ask the county attorney there, I don't know.
If we do something like they did, and what's in it.
I guess you would need to see the entire ordinance. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, I'm not interested in it, and I guarantee you, you're gonna fill up this place five times with people in here that are gonna tell you something, and you're gonna have people coming from all over the state. So I, I just think it's something you need to leave.
There are people firing and shooting weapons at night and everything, which make, you know. I just think we should make an effort to at least take the, what they have in consideration. Are there any other counties, Jeremy, that has anything like that?
Not to my knowledge, I just know Edgecombe because I was reinforced it, I know it was a big deal in twenty twenty one, that's when it was passed. But not to my knowledge, nobody else having one.
And so now that Dan makes that comment, I remember in twenty twenty Halifax was exploring, putting something like that in a place, and it was packed.
Okay, forget it.
It was packed, and people were pissed, and they did not move forward with it. Yeah, yeah, very upset, yeah, and they did not pass it.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's nothing wrong with trying to instill safe shooting with people if you run some kind of campaign or something to try to promote that, and that's something the sheriff can do from his office.
So just, I guess, the education.
That makes sense, like some kind of campaign.
Yeah, education.
Yeah.
A campaign that's by the sheriff's office to promote that. I would, that would be the stand, I would say, you know, something like that.
Okay.
But of course, the purpose of moving into county a lot of times is, a lot of times you move from the city to the county, so they can be able to shoot
Yeah.
on their own property.
Yeah, it's an added benefit.
Practice good guns, good gun, adequate.
Okay, so, and one more, one more thing that's not on your agenda, but I do want to bring it to your attention. So I met with the city manager and the assistant city manager, um, last week about some city and county business. And he presented to me a letter of support that Jordan wrote March of twenty twenty three in support of assisting with funding for a new tower. You all, were you all aware of that? It was, it's a two point one million dollar appropriation from, um, Congressman Davis's office in order to build a new communications tower, and so, March of twenty twenty three.
There was some conversation, the, the city wanted a, I believe, a microwave tower that would work with some of the buildings in the, in the city area.
Mm hmm.
And there was some conversation about whether or not it would work with our tower and, and be able to, to use it as a repeater for our northern part of the county, and I don't think we got any further than that on that.
Okay, well, Jordan provided a letter of support to, um, to Congressman Davis's office, and two point one, two point one million dollars has been appropriated for. And two-point-one, two-point-one million dollars has been appropriated for, um, the city of Henderson based off of the letter of support that states that the city and the county would share in the cost of the three-million-dollar tower. And there's a letter of support from, um, what was the previous nine-one-one director's name? Brian Short. Brian Short, um, Javier Plummer, as well as Jordan. Have three, three or four letters of support that were sent through. That, uh-huh, it was appropriated last year, two-point-one million dollars. Mm-hmm. Twenty-twenty-four. Yeah, twenty-twenty-four. Yeah, it was in twenty-twenty-four, yeah. It was submitted in twenty-twenty-three to get in twenty-twenty-four.
I think Brian is now our regional guy.
Mm-hmm.
And so he should be able to shed some light on that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I, I really think we're at the point where it's time for MOU to, MOU to assist in the funding. So I didn't know if this is something that you all want to explore to assist in the funding with the city of Henderson for this tower.
I think I would assume the board took some action on that at that time.
Kelly couldn't find anything in the minutes at all. There was nothing.
I don't remember.
I remember some conversations about it.
You know, it's some, it's a lot of.
We initially were, we were having some conversations then about the tower that we talked about the other week.
Uh-huh. The one that's off of US, our current tower?
And it wasn't appropriate for what they needed in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And whatever site they were working at, I, I remember some conversation about it.
Yeah, um.
Conversation about using the water, the one on the.
I don't remember that.
Tower on, on Water Street.
I don't, I don't remember that.
Are, are we talking about downtown?
Downtown, I, I was thinking we were trying to find a place that would work for downtown to enhance the, the service downtown and would also be beneficial to us. And like I said, Brian can probably just call him, and Brian can probably just spit it right out.
There was a discussion about something downtown.
Hmm.
Then I do remember some discussion about the water tower on Waters, on Andrews Avenue in terms of whether or not we could do, offer them, so I don't.
There was something I think about maybe using this building at one time, there was some conversation about it. But, uh, like I said, the best thing to do there is to let Brian give us some fresh on.
Okay, so just get some. Huh?
What kind of money is gonna go?